Good evening. Thank you all for joining us this evening. This regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of Socorro ISD is being called to order. The date is September 17th, 2019, and the time is 6:01. Tonight, our Pledge of Allegiance is going to be led by Manaya Felix, who is a 4th grader at Cactus Trails Elementary. If you will all stand and join us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as for
Thank you, Manaya. Item number three, Superintendent's comments. Dr. Espinoza.
Yes, President Nahara and members of the Board. It gives me great pleasure to welcome the newest members of our elite leadership team who are with us tonight. So, when I call your name, please stand to be recognized. Starting off with Ms. Yvonne Vallejo, a new Assistant Principal at Serna. A new Assistant Principal at Pebble Hills High School, Mr. Gerardo Talamantes. Mr. Abraham Camarillo is our new Licensed Specialist in School Psychology. Also, Eric Garcia is our new Employee Health Clinic pharmacist. And Dr. Alba Nevadas is our new Employee Health Clinic Physician. Congratulations. Congratulations to all of our new Team SISD members. Can't wait to see the impact that you're gonna have in your specific department or your specific school. Congratulations.
How exciting, you know?
Yes, yes it is. Yes, it is. Now, there's not a day that goes by that I'm not humbled to be part of such an amazing school district and an amazing community. And this past Saturday, Saturday morning to be exact, was another day when I still get very moved to see how much our Team SISD members care about our students here in Socorro ISD. We had our sixth annual Walk for Success on Saturday, and boy, what an amazing, amazing turnout on Saturday morning. I do want to thank Mr. Corey Craft. He's in the room here somewhere. Mr. Corey Craft, please stand, Mr. Craft. Thank you, Mr. Craft, for coordinating another successful event in which we walked. It was over 300 individuals. We walked our neighborhoods, hoping to bring all of our students back to earn their high school diploma. So, thank you to the entire, entire team. So, I also want to thank everyone who spent their Saturday with us in our labor of love, you know, administrators, teachers, council staff, trustees, board members who were with us, volunteers, everyone. You know, thank you from the bottom of my heart. What an amazing day. And we've had, Mr. Craft, had some students return already today and yesterday. So, it was a great, great day, and they're coming back. So, thank you. Also, today, we had another memorable event in our groundbreaking ceremony for Socorro High School. Providing our students in the Socorro community with a new high school has a very, very special meaning to all of us because that is our flagship. It's our oldest high school, it's our flagship campus. So, it was, you know, to be honest with you, it was hard to see, it was hard to see new schools like Pebble Hills, Eastlake with great weight rooms, gyms, et cetera, and seeing our Socorro High School students, you know, in an older, older, older building. But now, our Socorro High School students, you know, they can look forward to enjoying a state-of-the-art, new facility to carry on that legacy of our Socorro Bulldogs. So, we do have up here two, one of us not with us, but a Socorro High School graduate, Mr. Paul Garcia, right over here. 2001? 2003. Also, Mr. Gary Gandera has also graduated. Also, we have somebody who listens to his kids attend Socorro High School, Mr. Paul Gueda as well. So, you know, what a great day it is for the entire, entire community. So, President Nahara, members of the Board, that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Espinoza. We will continue with item number four for special presentations, and we do have a substitute this evening, Mr. Reyna.
Mr. Reyna.
Mr. Reyna.
Good evening, President Nahara, members of the Board, and Superintendent Dr. Espinoza. It is my pleasure and honor to introduce tonight's recognitions. Dr. Espinoza and Board members, if you please, please step down.
Boy, he's demanding, isn't he?
Please.
He said please.
We have two special presentations this evening. First of all, we're gonna honor the Journalism Teacher at El Dorado High School for being a recipient of the 2019 Rising Star Award by the Journalism Education Association. She is one of 12 teachers nationwide to earn this prestigious award, which recognizes teachers with less than five years of experience who show excellence in scholastic journalism and media advertising. In recognition of her great work, the Rising, this Rising Star will be recognized at the National High School Journalism Convention this fall in Washington, DC. From El Dorado High School, congratulations to Ms. Martinez, Vanessa Martinez. Please join us. Next, it's also my honored, we're gonna be recognizing Team SISD Communications Officer being selected as the 2019 SISD Wall of Honor recipient. The skilled Public Relations Professional Proponent for Team SISD is a NEPT in Media Relations, Communicative Relations, Community Relations, and an Advocate for Public Education locally and at the state and at the national level. He and his team worked tirelessly to promote the district's 49 schools, more than 47,000 students and 6,000 employees. Under the leadership of SISD Superintendent Dr. Jose Espinoza and the Board of Trustees, following the vision of excellence for SISD, they have garnered widespread recognition for the district employees and students. This ISD Public Relations Team is the first and only school district in the region to earn the National Public Relations Association Gold Medalion Award for Team SISD in this Opportunities Campaign. A comprehensive, year-round communications plan. They also won the Golden Achievement Award for their work that they do in marketing and unprecedented SIS Stand and Deliver Walk. In addition, the SISD PR Department won the Texas School Public Relations Association Platinum Award. The overall top public relations award is in the state, Crystal Commendation Award, and various other NSPRA State and TSPRA Awards for outstanding public relations, multimedia, and marketing projects. The accolades combined deemed them as the highest-award school PR team in the state of Texas, not only state, but also national. In addition to earning the highest honor for the PR team across the United States and Canada. Congratulations to the outstanding team employee and 2019 SISD Wall of Honor recipient, Daniel Daniel, can you please join us?
Thank you.
Item 5A, under Board of Trustees' business, we have considered approval of National School Lunch Week, October 14th through 18th. Ms. Shnawski.
Good evening. Thank you, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the Board. I have two very special guests with me today to help me present the proclamation. I have Mr. Diego Contreras. He is representing our amazing turkey dogs that we serve at the campus, and the kids And we have Ms. Manaya Felix, and she will read our proclamation, and I'll let her read in just a moment. Again, thank you. I speak for myself and the entire Child Nutrition Team when I say thank you to all of you for all you do for our students and the Socorro District community. Thank you, Board. Thank you, Dr. Espinoza.
Thank you.
I am truly humbled to stand before you as leader of Child Nutrition Services. I have the honor and the privilege to represent some of the hardest-working team members. Each member works with pride and love to give our students high-quality nutritious meals. I have many of our team members here with me tonight. They include administration and campus managers. If I can have all our CNS team members, please stand. The reason we are here is to celebrate and proclaim National School Lunch Week. It is a week in which the entire nation celebrates the nation's school lunch program. It is a time to celebrate the healthy nutritious meals that are served throughout this country. Socorro ISD is a huge contributor of those meals, as we, as over 600 of our employees serve over 28,000 healthy, delicious lunch meals daily. And that's just lunch. We serve 28,000 breakfasts as well, and our supper program too. So, with that, here to present and read the National School Lunch Week official proclamation, it is my pleasure to introduce an amazing, amazing Team SISD scholar from our newest campus, Cactus Trails Elementary, Ms. Manaya Felix.
Whereas the National School Lunch Program has served our nation admirably over, for over 60 years through advanced practices and nutrition education, and whereas the National School Lunch Program is dedicated to the health and well-being of our nutrition children, and whereas our National School Lunch Program has been joined through the years by many other excellent child feeding programs, and there is evidence of continuing being the nutrition education awareness for over, awareness of the view of school nutrition program. I do, I do come, I do hereby proclaim the week of October 14th through the 18th, 2019, as National School Lunch Week, and I encourage all residents to become aware and concerned about their children, children's and their own nutrition, nutrition habits, in hope of achieving a more helpful sit-ensery for today and the future.
Administration requests approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Gueda. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, President Nahara.
Yes, sir.
I do want to thank Ms. Shnawski for her leadership, and, you know, they, this is not all the team, obviously, but have a tremendous team. Our cafeteria workers, you know, our CNS employees, they're amazing. Hungry students are not gonna learn. They are there early preparing the breakfast, the lunches, you know, and I know Mr. Men and I were at El Fida Chavez and Montwood Middle School yesterday, I think it was, and I said, "Mr. Men, we gotta go check out the kitchen. You're gonna see some of the hardest-working employees." And they're there, you know, about 19 total people, about half with the El Fida, half with Montwood Middle. They're there with smiles, you know, getting ready to feed all of our students here in those specific schools, you know, but great job. Just thank you for, from the bottom of my heart, of the hard work that y'all do in making sure that our students are, are not hungry. So, muchas gracias.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you so much. Item 5B, consider approval of Texas Education Human Resources Day Resolution. Mr. Campoya is not here with us.
That doesn't look like Mr. Campoya. I don't look like Mr. Campoya. I'm not as tall either. But good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the Board. My name is Angelica Herrera. I am one of the Directors of Human Resources, and I am presenting this item on behalf of Mr. Campoya, who couldn't be here with us tonight. I am here tonight, as in previous years, to request your approval for designating October 9th, 2019, as Texas Education Human Resources Day. Governor Abbott has proclaimed this day as a Texas Education Human Resources Day. This proclamation is in recognition of the vital role that human resources professionals play in implementing effective practices for the hiring of highly qualified and effective staff aligned with our strategic direction number three. I do have Mr. Christian Bustillos, one of our 7th grade students from Sunridge Middle School, here with us tonight to read the resolution.
Whereas the Human Resources Division is instrumental in recruiting, selecting, resourcing, and retaining quality staff in support of providing an excellent education for all students. And whereas human resources plays a key role in fostering satisfaction and loyalty among employees by allowing for professional growth and development and keeping employees informed about policies, working conditions, compensation, and benefits. And whereas human resources monitors and manages current and future workforce trends, organizational culture, legal and legislative trends, and ethical and social responsibilities. And whereas human resources is an important part of district leadership and is vital to overall productivity and efficiency of the district's workforce. And whereas the human resources is a valued and respected department that sustains the district's most important asset, its people. Therefore, the Board of Trustees of the Socorro Independent School District does hereby resolve that October 9th, 2019, will be observed as Texas Education Human Resources Day throughout, throughout the district. The Board also encourages students, staff, and parents to express their appreciation to our human resources team members for their dedication and commitment to Socorro ISD employees and students. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Administration recommends your approval of the resolution presented tonight.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Morales. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, President Nahara. Another awesome member of Team SISD, it was a department. Please stand, got an HR department. And believe me, President Nahara, members of the Board, and people in the audience, there's more people in the HR department than what you saw. These are just the hardest-working people, right? No, no, it's a great, everyone, they do a magnificent job in making sure, as was stated earlier, you know, one of our strategic directions is hiring highly effective faculty and staff, so they do a phenomenal job. So, thank you, HR department.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item number six, open forum. We have no one signed up to speak tonight, so we'll move on to item number seven, the District Reports. A, Annual Investment Report for Fiscal Year 2018-2019. Mr. Vargas.
Thank you. Good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the Board. My name is Renee Vargas, Director of Business Services. As required by Board Policy, CDA, Local, I'm here tonight to present to you the year-to-end investment reports for 2018-2019 fiscal year. This report will focus on three areas, the investment yields, the earnings, and balances. Starting off on the first slide, as you can see on the screen, you will see information on the average monthly yields from 2018-2019 fiscal year. With respect to investment yields, rates started ranges of 189 to 220 basis points for the investment pools and 18 basis points for the Wells Fargo repo account. And just to remind the Board, basis points is 1 one-hundredth of 1 percent. The rates increased in the investment pools the second quarter to the, to between 214 to 233 basis points. In the period of January through March of 2019, the investment yields for the pools continued to increase to a range of 237 to 267 basis points in response to several interest rate hikes from the Federal Reserve. In the final quarter, the investment pools saw further increases, depending on the pool, of 238 to 300 basis points. The consensus is that the Federal Reserve will not be raising our rates and, in fact, have reduced the interest rates this past July due to softness in the economy and tariff disputes with China. Therefore, we project interest yields to decrease in long-term investments for the upcoming fiscal year. The next slide, we have a comparison of the interest earned from prior year was prepared for each investment pool. All accounts from each pool is separated to reflect a clear comparison of the particular investment account. Starting with our first pool, which is a tax pool, it consists of 11 accounts, and it had a total increase of 352,418. The next one is our, our second pool is a first public, when it consists of nine accounts, and it had an increase of interest earned in the amount of 823,510. With respect to the interest earnings, as you can see on the slide, on this investment and the prior one, you, you see that there's a, the general, general increase over the last year on, on the food service account, the general fund account, interest and sinking fund. Well, there was a small negative amount on the 2011 bond accounts, and this was because of the principal construction balance hat that, respective category decreased since most of the projects had been completed. Our next slide, here you see the interest earnings for Wells Fargo, as well as Logic. Wells Fargo is our operating account, and, which is our general fund account. So, on that one, you'll see a small change of $9,700. The fourth pool account is Logic, and it consists of seven accounts, and it had an increase of eight, over $879,000. The next slide, you see Texas Term Daily and the Fixed Maturity Investments. Texas Term Daily has seven accounts, and it had an increase of 629,290 and cents. The administrative has moved toward longer maturities to lock in higher yields in certain funds when possible, as exhibited in the Texas Term, our last account, which is, it consists of three accounts. And this is where, excuse me, we had an increase of $1.1 million on there. And this is especially true because of the debt service fund, where funds aren't needed until our bond payments, which is in February and August. And during that period, a long-term investment in the Texas Term matured, and excess funds weren't reinvested until March. The district realized approximately $7.5 million in interest earning from all funds. This is an increase of 3.8 million from the prior year. This increase is due to the investment yields and receiving of the 2017 bond proceeds. Finally, what's illustrated is investment balances for the entire year. And on this one, you'll see the district started with a year, the principal balance of $572 million, and this decreased to the end of the first quarter to $298 million. This is primarily due to the fact that the district doesn't receive a state revenue payment in August, and we had to draw down on investment balances for operational cash flow needs. This, this amount increased to $373.9 million in the second quarter due to tax collections in December. The balance further increased to $389 million in the third quarter due to the remaining tax collections in the spring months, and the investment balances finally increased to, by 105.5 million in the last quarter, ending up with a balance of $479.7 million. This is due to the receipt of the 150 million we received from the second bond sale of the 2017 bond program in May. In conclusion, in conclusion, the Administration will continue to utilize investment pools and the Wells Fargo repo account for investment purposes, as well as utilizing longer maturities for funds that don't require immediate cash flow needs, and will endeavor to increase investment yields while minimizing investment risk. Are there any questions I may answer?
Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Vargas, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And item 7B, Facilities Report.
Good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the Board. Today, we'll go over our Facility Report. Our Facility Committee met earlier this week to review our projects, and this will be an executive summary of that. Of course, today, Dr. Espinoza mentioned that we did have a groundbreaking ceremony at Socorro High School, which turned out to be a hot and humid day. Beginning with, I can't see. This is Socorro Independent, this is the Socorro High School. I guess the title, the upper part cut off. We did have the groundbreaking ceremony. The Board approved the rest of the GMP last month, and we are into construction on the Package One, which is the site work and removal of the baseball field and building the new baseball, softball field, excuse me, and some student parking, along with some utility relocation. The Board approved the second package, which was the remaining package, and we have, we are gonna start advertising that and start taking proposals on that bid, so we can start the actual construction of the building. The second one is Cactus Trails. Cactus Trails is completed. It was our first project completed, and we are in the warranty period, and we are also doing punchless work on the building after hours. The next one would, should be Montwood High School. There is an agenda item concerning Montwood High School, and I'll speak a little bit later on, in new business to that. But the sports lighting is under construction and is nearing completion. completion. The poles are in place, and I believe we show some of the light poles on the baseball and softball field, and we just have to kind of regulate those and get those foot candles appropriate and, and turn up, kind of tweak the system in order for them to be finalized. And then, tonight, we'll be asking for the remaining building package, which I'll explain when we get to that agenda item later on in the meeting. And here's another picture of the crane actually setting the poles at, at the fields. The next one is Americas High School. Tonight, we'll also present a guaranteed maximum price on the sports lighting package, and we will, if approved tonight, we will begin advertisement and bidding of that project so we can start that project as far as the lighting goes on the, on the Americas High School. We are still working with the architect to finalize the drawings and to come up with the guaranteed maximum price, which we will be bringing to the board in a couple of months. Eldorado High School, the board approved the GMP on the sports lighting. We received bids on the 10th of September, and we gave notices to proceed on the 12th of September. So, construction will begin on the sports lighting portion of Eldorado, and this project we're also working on with the architects to finalize the remaining packages and bring that to the board for the remaining guaranteed maximum price. The next project is the Student Activity Complex. We had the design workshop on the 5th of September. We were at 30,000 feet, so we're getting a little bit closer to the ground. We've come up with the, what we believe is the consensus of what the concept should be, so we are going to start refining that concept. I have a meeting with the architects in their Dallas office this Thursday to review some of those, and we will start actually the physical design of the buildings and stuff, and work on the, finalizing the concept. The 16 Auxiliary Gym, Package One is complete, which consists of Benito Martinez, Afita Chavez, Helen Ball, Luan Chavez, O'Shea, and Robert Itoarte. We'll be going out for bids in, let me see, in the next couple of days on that project. It's going to be advertised on October the 1st. The pre-bid will be October the 8th, which would be the second advertisement, and a proposal open is scheduled for October the 29th, which we will then bring proposals to the board in, in November for approval. The other packages, Package Two, which is, this is also Horizon Heights, Loma Buri, Myrtle Cooper, and Saravista are about 65 to 70 percent complete. Once those drawings are totally complete, we'll put those packages out. We want to kind of stagger these, you know, because we divide them up in, in three different packages, so like I said, our staff is reviewing those drawings as we speak, and the architect is completing those drawings to bring forward to the board, hopefully before the end of the year. And then the remaining package, which is the Valley Schools, Compestra, Escondrius, Hilli, Waco, and Rojas, we are finalizing the geo-testing or geo-drilling of the holes. We've run into some issues as far as, at Rojas, we hit the fire line. Thank God we didn't hit the main line to the water, it was the, so we are doing some infrared studies to locate the utilities so we can complete those borons at those locations, and then those documents could be, will be completed, and we'll be able to put those out for proposals. Next project is the Support Services Technology Facility, which is going to be built here at the DSC. We are, that project is out for bids, out for proposal. We had a, a nice turnout in our pre, pre-bid meeting. I think there was five or six companies showed up. Hopefully, we'll get five or six proposals in compared to when we bid it back in May. And those proposals are due on September the 25th. And then if they come in good, we will present those at the October board meeting. Final project is the Combo School, or reported last month that we did acquire the 37.6 acres, and, you know, so that closed the property deal on that. We are having a kickoff meeting this coming Tuesday, a week from today, with the architect and the contractor to start that project, to start the actual design of the new combo school, and we will be reporting on how that project is being designed and presented in future meetings. Yes, we had, that, that's majority of the construction. I don't know if y'all have gotten calls, but we have gotten calls from principals and stuff about canopies being destroyed in the heavy winds and stuff that we had in late spring, and then we had some here not a month or so ago. And you can see the, on my left-hand side, the picture, that canopy is totally destroyed. But that canopy was a huge canopy in one piece, and when the winds came, they acted like a parachute, and they just ripped them off. What we are doing now, Mr. Crossco has formulated a team, and we've got our own individual guys are going out making these repairs to these canopy. And the canopy next to it, you see that we've put slits in it and made it more like a open parachute so the wind can kind of go through it. And we do all this, the manufacturing of that, sewing, and, and creating the smaller pieces in order to, you know, instead of a large piece of canopy that acts as a uplift of the wind and a parachute, and they just get ripped apart. Ultimately, we love to put all metal canopies, but that costs a lot of money, so we are, we're looking at that in a long-term goal, but we are going to go back and repair these canopies, and as you see, we've repaired multiple canopies at different sites, and we're getting to the other canopies as fast as we can. And then our grounds department has done a tremendous job getting the modular buildings and, and doing sidewalks and stuff. We're, we're still lacking a few pieces of sidewalks at a couple of jobs at Drugan and at Shook, but they should be coming in here, hopefully by the end of the intercessions, and then we'll be all complete with, with the, with those projects, the portables at Drugan and the modular buildings at Shook. And that completes my report.
Are there any questions?
Miss Nahara, I have a question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Getta.
Mr. Eington, regarding to the sports lighting package, obviously we're doing Montwood, Americas, and Eldorado, and I guess the only school left we have is Eastlake.
And Pebble Hills.
And Pebbles.
Yes, I am working to put together a proposal on that, to hire a firm to do those design. Pebble Hills is, we want to look at the baseball field because we had some issues with the depth behind the home plate, and Maintenance and Operations came in and built a secondary fence in there. So, before we did any light poles at the existing fields the way it's built, I want to look at to see the possibility if we can move that back, shorten that distance behind home plate, and then, then come in with the lights and stuff. But yes, those two projects we're working on.
What are we looking at roughly, I mean, I'm going to hold you to it, just rough in those two projects?
As far as cost, completion, or what?
Completion.
Completion. They won't be completed by this time, I mean, for this baseball season, or for the following baseball season.
Okay, sir, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Eington.
Thank you.
And item 7C, School Health Advisory Council, our Shack yearly report, Ms. Madrid.
Good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. I'm Rebecca Madrid, and I'm the coordinator of the School Health Advisory Committee, and I have the president, Mr. Frank Torres, who's going to give the report for the School Health Advisory Committee.
Good evening, School Board, Dr. Espinoza. As you know, this is the Shack Committee, and we're a group of individuals representing segments of the community appointed by the school district to serve the district level to provide advice and to the district and on coordinating school health programming and its impact on student health and learning, right? And as you know, I am the president, I'm really busy, I'm sorry for my appearance. We just finished our, our fundraiser, our, El Paso is fighting hunger at Drugan this afternoon. We just finished cleaning up at around 5:00, 5:15, so sorry about this.
We're just happy you're here.
I'm super busy, I'm super busy, I'm sorry. You know, we provide an effective and efficient structure for recommending age-appropriate sequential health educational programs and early intervention and prevention strategies that can easily support, be supported by local families and committee, local stakeholders. We had five meetings this last year, August, October, December, February, April, and we've always invited the board members to appoint members of the community to be part of the Shack, of course, and three of the agencies that you all approved was Ending the Silence, which is reducing the stigma of mental illness among our students all throughout the campuses, of course, and Choosing the Best, getting results and changing lives, which is the Abstinence Center for Sexual Education, also again throughout the middle schools and high schools, and the El Paso City's Health Department with the Tobacco Exposed, which is there's no smoking and no vaping, of course, throughout the campuses, and, and we've also implemented, not, not us, but the, you all in the Law Enforcement Division, the new laws against possession of any vaping, what do you call it? What is the word?
Apparatus.
Any vaping.
Apparatus.
Apparatus, uh-huh. Yes, any kind of equipment or part of it, or it's, it's against a lot of habit on campuses at all, period. And our overall attendance is just right below 50, which includes, of course, parents, volunteers. Liaisons also come and get information with our meetings, of course, and take it back to their schools, and the nursing team, of course, with Ms. Becky and Robert, they're all very helpful, and your staff here at the offices, of course, are also very helpful in putting it all together for me. They really help me a lot, thank you very much. And this year's milestone was, of course, partnering with the national organization, Action for Health, and they helped train the Shack members, and we will be starting this up in November this year. And that's it. If any questions or any comments, please.
Does anyone have any questions?
I got a question.
Yes, Mr. Garcia.
Do you all ever have any discussions regarding bullying?
Regarding what?
Bullying.
Bullying, yes, yes, sir, that's, we've started one, and it's still, we're still waiting for the approval or see what is going to be the results of it, of course.
We have, we have outside agencies that come in to want to educate our children, so what they do is they come in, present their program, and so it's the parents that ask questions, and they approve whether the agencies could come in and educate the children. Okay, so it could be any agencies out there that have those kind of programs, so, and it gives the, the parents the opportunity to ask those kind of questions.
Okay.
And answer your question.
Thank you both for your time.
Thank you.
And your efforts.
And yes, please, we appreciate all of the Shack members giving of their time for the health of our kids, we are truly grateful. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
We will move on with item eight, Consent Agenda. Are there any items to be pulled? Wow.
Yes.
Have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Getta. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Item nine, New Business, A, consider approval of the guaranteed maximum price for sports lighting package at America's High School.
Yes, good evening again. This report begins on 271 of your booklet. It has to do with the sports package, proposed guarantee maximum price at America's High School from Bain's General Contractor. Back on March the 27th of 2018, the board approved Bain's as the construction manager and, for this project. And tonight, if the board approves the GMP, it will allow Bain's along with the Purchases Department to accept proposal for the sports lighting packages. Pending approval tonight, legal counsel and administration has prepared the amendment number one to the contract for the owners and the construction manager as contractor dated the March 27th in the amount of $877,980 for the sports lighting package. Now, this package is, if you're familiar with Americas, Americas baseball field has lights, softball field does not have lights, and we have not been able to turn on the Americas lights because of Title IX. This will put the lights in the softball field, and it'll also upgrade the lights at the baseball field to the LED lights that we are installing at all the other campuses. Administration recommends approval to the GMP, guaranteed maximum price, with Bain's General Contracting, the amount of $877,980.
Motion to approve, second.
Sorry, who was the second? I have a motion by Mr. Getta and a second by Mr. Mina. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. And item 9B, Mr. Eington, consider approval of guaranteed maximum price for the remaining improvements at Montwood High School.
Yes, President Nahara, members of the board, this report starts on 274. However, I do have some slides I would like to show as a part of this presentation, and then I'll get into my recommendation. Of course, this is the existing Montwood High School auditorium or theater. The new Montwood improvements will consist of a Fine Arts Wing, and I've got slides that break the, what it actually is, but basically, you can see the large glass area in the center with the little pie shape. That is going to be the new focal point or the new entry to the school. To my right, where the logo is, is the new auditorium and the fly loft over the stage. To the left is the Fine Heart, Fine Arts Edition, in addition also, which is the band hall and some core classroom facilities. So, basically, this GMP will consist of the Fine Arts, Academic Edition, and renovations. There will be about 58,000 square. There will be about 58,000 square feet of new construction and about 121,000 square feet of renovations. The new construction, performance and fine arts spaces, the new theater, the new band room, additional core classrooms and support facility, that totals about seven classrooms that are going to be added to the facility in a second-story area to the back of that picture you saw. Renovations will take place in the interior of the building. The science rooms and labs will be upgraded to the TEA standards. The special ed department will be upgraded. Expanded and rebranding of the servants line. If you recall, Montwood High School is one of the schools that does, kind of has an open, I guess, open campus. And they have a very, very small cafeteria. So, with moving out of the theater, the existing auditorium into a new theater, that allows us to expand and rebrand that area for child nutrition, to add additional serving line, and then it'll also create dining spaces in the old auditorium. I think I got them spelt wrong up there. So, back to the page on two, the report on 274. Administration awarded this project back in March of, March 27, 2018, to BTC Construction Company. And tonight, if the board approves this guaranteed maximum price, it'll allow us to work, as I stated before, with the purchasing department in order to put this out for proposals and to start getting bids on this project. Legal counsel has prepared amendment number two, because amendment number one was for the sports lighting, so amendment number two will be for the remaining packages. And in, in the amount of $32,885, $885, and $449. Thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Thirty-two million.
Thirty-two million, okay.
I wish it was thirty-two thousand.
Yeah, I do too, I do too. Thirty-two million, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars. And this actually is right on budget.
Okay.
It's, it's a little over, but there is about $900,000 in contingency. And of course, we get all the buyout savings, so we feel very comfortable that this will be right on.
Right on the money.
Right on the money. So, administration recommends approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Getta. Is there any further discussion?
President Nahara?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Eington, can you show us the slide where it's showing the, the picture of the front of this school? Okay, can you tell me again where the new auditorium is going to be?
The new auditorium, you see that center section, that real high area that has glazing or glass, looks like a storefront, the big U shape, right to the, my left, or my right?
Where the ram, the end of the ram, that white building right there?
Where the ram is?
See, the ram, the ram is the actual stage loft.
Okay.
And then the state, the theater is in, is where the red brick is or the brownish-colored brick is. So, it's in that area.
Okay. And on the other side, like where the black car is and the white?
Yes.
That's going to be?
The band.
Okay.
Band room. And then you can see in the back portion, a little raised area.
Mm-hmm.
Before you get to the, the metal green roofing, that's where your classrooms are going to be.
Okay.
Along that area.
Mr. Eington, I have a question. What are we going to do for parking? Because I know you took up a lot of the parking spaces.
We have studied that, and we meet all requirements and stuff, so we feel we're okay with the parking. All we did was take up the, the front area. There'll still be park on either side. So, you know, everything checks out code-wise and everything else.
So, you feel that's enough parking for students?
Yes.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. And we'll continue with you, Mr. Eington.
Yes.
Item 9C, Consider Approval of Extension for the Option Lease Period with Branch Communications for Six Months for Montwood High School Cell Tower Site.
Yes, I have, we've brought this back to you a couple of times, and this is basically the cell tower site at Montwood High School, which Branch Communication is doing all the design, all the cost is on them. And they have run into some issues with the plating of the site, which we have resolved and all that. But it has extended them to not make their deadline, and they just would like a little an extension to comply with the city and all of that. They're willing to pay us an extra $500. It's not a lot, but once it's complete, the actual lease kicks into the, where we get $1,500 a month. Then after that year, we have an escalation call clause that the board has already approved and stuff. So, there's, there's two parts. This, this part is actually the extension. And the second item, which is the next item, is the actual amendment.
Okay.
Administration recommends approval.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Mina. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. And Item 9D, Consider Approval of Amendment to the Memorandum of Agreement for Montwood High School Cell Tower.
Yes, this is just the actual memorandum for agreement. So, Mr. Blanco and his team has looked over all the leases, and this is just a portion of that that needs to be approved and signed by the board, and administration recommends approval.
So.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Getta and a second by Ms. Rodriguez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Eington. You're finally done. Are you done?
You're going to talk about something else.
Not really, but for now. Item 9E, Consider Approval of Tasby Update 113, Dr. Graham.
Good evening, Ms. Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, and board members. We have several policies that need your approval, and we have gone through them with, with the committee. Are there any questions? If not, administration recommends approval of the policies listed.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Mr. Mina and a second by Mr. Garcia. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Graham.
Thank you.
Item 10, Executive Session. The meeting is closed to receive and discuss the status of employment of A. Lopez and S. Witt and the recommendation of administration to terminate employment for good cause, discussion regarding status of real estate transaction to and from the state of Texas for the benefit of the permanent school fund, and to discuss personnel and real estate matters under Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.072, and 551.074. We are adjourned, the time is 7 o'clock. 7:40. We'll continue with New Business 11A, Consider Appropriate Action Regarding the Termination of the Probationary Contract of A. Lopez for Good Cause. Mr. Blanco.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. Steve Blanco, legal counsel for the district. In August, at the regular board meeting, we briefed the board and gave you a summary of the charges and the evidence against Mr. Lopez. The administration issued him notice of the board's recommendation to propose the termination of his contract for good cause. That notice was sent to him on August 21st and delivered on August 23rd. It advised him of his right to appeal the proposed termination of his contract. No appeal has been received, and no appeal was filed with the Commissioner of Education. At this time, the board can take final action on the recommendation, so we're asking the board to approve the recommendation to terminate the contract of A. Lopez for good cause.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Mr. Mina and a second by Mr. Getta. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Item 11B, Consider Appropriate Action Regarding the Termination of the Probationary Contract of S. Witt for Good Cause. Mr. Blanco.
Thank you. Again, at the August meeting, we briefed the board on the charges and the evidence regarding the recommendation of the administration to propose the termination of the contract of S. Witt for good cause. As with Mr. Lopez, notice was issued following the August meeting. That notice was issued on August 21st and delivered on August 23rd. Based on the information that has been provided to the school board, and because no appeal was filed, no appeal was received by the Commissioner of Education, the board can now take final action on the proposal to terminate the contracts. We're asking the board to approve the recommendation of administration to terminate the contract of S. Witt for good cause.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Mina and a second by Mr. Getta. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Item 11C, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve Acquisition of Real Estate to and from the state of Texas for the benefit of the permanent school fund.
Thank you. At previous meetings, this goes back to June and July, we discussed the ongoing negotiations with the state of Texas and the El Paso Water Utilities, I believe, to acquire a portion in a lot near the SAC. And obviously, we're having additional construction for the new athletic complex being built out there. And we reached a binding letter of intent for the purchase of this property. And we need a rather lengthy motion to authorize Ms. Nahara as the board president and Mr. Eington to complete any necessary documents so we can finalize that transaction. I might have explained the reason why we have to do that because of the minutes and the title insurance. So, I'd ask Mr. Morales if he would read the motion that we've prepared.
I move to authorize the administration, on behalf of the district, to enter into and perform the obligations under the agreement to buy from the state of Texas for the benefit of the permanent school fund approximately 4.26 acres of land with a legal description of OA Danielson survey, 312 abstract, 10028 tract, 3-B-4, and approximately 1.5 acres of land with legal description of One Champions Edition Lot 1 in the El Paso County, Texas, for district use in line with the term discussed during the closed session, to authorize Cynthia Anne Nahara as president and Thomas A. Eington, AIA, as chief operations officer of the district, and each of them acting alone to sign such agreements, documents, and instruments as may be required under such agreement, and to authorize the secretary and the vice president of the board of the district to execute the certificate resolution as presented during closed session.
I have a motion by Mr. Morales and a second by Ms. Rodriguez. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Blanco. If there's no, any, if there's no further business before this board, we are adjourned, the time is 7:45.